Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the KBC Council regular meeting. We're actually reconvening our meeting because we started at six this morning, or this morning. Six this evening with an executive session, so we'll start with an invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear my Father, I want to extend prayers for our men and women that are first responders, our police, our fire, and our paramedics in our community. Please keep them safe and sound in their daily duties and protect them and bring them home every night after their shift. I ask you these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the opportunity for citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for the audience members to address the city council on non-agenda items. So if you're interested in addressing the council, please fill out the yellow card, which is located and being protected by Camby's finest back there on the podium, and just fill it out like Mr. Johnson did and return it to our city recorder, and she'll make sure that I get it and are given your three minutes to address the council. I don't think we have anybody online, but if you do wish to address council but can't make it in, please notify our city recorder by 4:30 on the day of our meetings, and we'll make sure that you are able to zoom in and address the council. So with that, I've got one card, and that's Mr. Johnson to address us on Parks and Recreation from the Advisory Board. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hudson and council members. I'm going to read through this as quickly as I can. It sounds like there's been some updates to these, so you can fill me in as we go, I guess. I'm here today to provide an overview of the projects recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that are awaiting approval and further review. Auburn Farms, this is a new park on the north side of town. A contract was submitted to the city administrator on March 2nd, and the board is awaiting approval. The contract is with Harper Huff, Peterson, and Regalas for approximately $33,000, and that can be approved by the city administrator, and I believe it has.
It has been completed.
Main Street Park, we had a community engagement meeting, conducted that on Monday, March 2nd, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee held a special meeting on April 10th to prioritize the projects that resulted from that community meeting. The board unanimously agreed on turfing the infield at Maple Street Park and installing lights for those ball fields, as well as to make improvements to the walking path. This work is in the Parks Master Plan, it is budgeted, and has been approved with the Capital Improvement Plan. The contractors, Field Turf and Musco, are ready to go to work. We need contracts with Field Turf and Musco to move forward, and I believe the direction's been given to our Public Works folks. This project is very time-sensitive, as the contractors need to begin to work after the softball season, which is around August 1st, in order to ensure the ball fields will be ready for play in the spring of 2024. Your support of these contracts is very much appreciated. We have an outdoor fitness court that requires some legal review, and this is to go at Legacy Park, and so we're waiting for some review and some purview over legal issues. Malala State Park, OISA is the Oregon Youth Soccer Association, and they have expressed some interest of building a facility, a recreation facility, in the Camby area, and we've identified maybe Malala State Park could be, we could get a long-term lease or whatever, or maybe there's some other acreage nearby that, or in the area that we could put this in. They're very much committed right now, as I talked to Patrick Sampson yesterday with CoGeo, and they're still very much interested in Camby, and we're talking in putting in soccer fields, baseball softball fields, playground equipment, it's the whole nine yards, and we're talking about turf fields and the like. So they've completed their final internal reports and are waiting to be contacted by the mayor and/or the city administrator to present to the public. So Patrick is really looking forward for a phone call from you.
Great.
Okay. Community Park and Swim Center, our board expresses appreciation for moving forward with these very important projects. Community Park, we're already, contract's been signed with Camby Excavating. They've ordered two new restrooms. I mean, we're putting in additional parking, and, well, the sewer, they're pumping uphill to improve that. In closing, our board has been very busy planning and executing projects that will greatly enhance our parks and lives of our citizens. So your continued support in seeing these come to fruition is greatly appreciated. I appreciate the time, and if you have questions, I will do my best to answer.
Nope. I think you covered a lot that you guys have been working on, and appreciate that. And like you said, yeah, so a number of these things, you appreciate the updates, and even Mr. Arch and I had conversation earlier this week about these as well. And so, yeah, there's a lot of movement that has occurred already, like Auburn Farms, the design and engineering's going out. So that'll be great for that part of the community. And then, like, as you said, the turf field moving forward will be great. I think, yeah, Public Works and that team's already moving forward on that. And then, more to come on the Malala State Park piece. There has to be some conversation amongst us before we determine any further direction on that, but more to come on that piece, so.
And we will.
More to come for the council.
And like we did at Maple Street with Auburn Farms, we will have a community engagement meeting with those people to find out what they would like to see in that area park, and then we'll build around that.
All right. Well, I appreciate bearing your leadership on the park board and the board itself. It's been, it was a joy to work with you guys, and I know your passion around parks, and it's evident in going with the master plan and where we're at, so.
I got grandkids.
They need a place to play, right?
They need a place to play.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, Counselor Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about the dog park. In January, the council voted to send that park back to the Parks Board for evaluation and recommendation. Has the Parks Board had an opportunity to discuss that yet?
We are still, that is still on, that is still in play, and there was direction, I believe it was at one of the earlier meetings in January. I think Scott might have directed our Public Works team to work with, I guess they're called HHPR, to have them look at three or four alternative, or alternate locations in the city, and then we would move forward based on their recommendations. They're looking at, in the master plan, there was a, there's recommendations from the American Kennel Club as, you know, kind of requirements or what to look for in putting in a dog park. And so they'll look at that, at those notes, and then provide us with their recommendation, and then we'll move forward. We will. It is still very much on the agenda.
Okay, great. Anything else for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other yellow cards, and there's no one that's zoomed in to provide any community input. So before I move on to item number three, I take a moment and welcome back Mr. Lindsay. Thank you, sir, for being here. We missed you. Glad you're here. So item number three is the swearing-in of a new police officer, and Chief Trow is here for that.
Yes.
With his badge here.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to do this ceremony in front of you guys. It means a lot to us. So I'm going to bring up Steve Holloman up here. So Steve replaces Officer Jeremy Holstadt, who retired earlier this year. So we're happy that he's on board. He just started with us on March 27th. He's currently in the field training phase of learning our procedures and city and our policies. So a little background on Steve. He was born and raised in Gladstone, Oregon, so just off the road from us. He grew up playing sports and attended Gladstone High School. I heard his dad was a legend with coach and a mentor at Gladstone High School. I don't know if you liked him being there with you, or...
Best dad in the world.
Awesome, man. It's great. He went on to Western Oregon University, where he wrestled, and he earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He enjoys hunting, fishing, and anything outdoors. So Steve is a lateral police officer from the city of Hubbard. This is our second officer we have taken from the city of Hubbard. Chief Dave Brash was, you know, I apologize, but he's not, so.
And I'd be careful bragging about those kinds of things.
Prior to that, he actually worked for the Milwaukee Police Department and was a reserve officer for the city of Montana Police Department for several years. As you know, so the advantage of hiring a lateral officer, which are very hard to find because every department in the state is pretty much hiring right now, is that if we don't have to send them to the academy, and we say about six to nine months in training, so he'll get out on the road and serve the citizens before, like, if we hired him, so that's really nice. He chose police work because he grew up in a family of servant leaders, specifically educators, mentors, and coaches. He wanted to serve the community but was unsure in what way until he went on a ride-along. By the end of the ride-along, he was sold on law enforcement. He chose to apply to Camby after attending multiple trainings put on by our agencies. He told me that the team atmosphere and camaraderie between officers combined with the high-level training made it clear that Camby PD would be a great fit for him. We are glad he applied. Steve has been married to his beautiful wife, Rachel, of five years, and they have a three-year-old, Rhett, who's running around, he was running around outside, and a baby girl due in August. Would you like to introduce your family and friends?
Yes. Beautiful woman in the denim jacket is Rachel, with my son Rhett. Next to them is my sister Danielle, my brother-in-law Devin, and there's daughter Morgan. My nephew Kate is at my mom's ease lap. That's my father-in-law Ron and my mother-in-law Brittany.
Thank you all for being here today. So I'm going to call the ground up here to actually listen to you wearing it.
Come on over. I've got instructions that we have to stand close to.
Okay.
Okay, so, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Hi, Steve Allman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the constitutions.
That I will support and uphold the constitutions.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Camby.
Of the city of Camby.
Remaining in compliance with.
Remaining in compliance with.
The professional standards established by.
The professional standards established by.
The department's mission, values, and professional code of ethics.
The department's mission, standards, and professional code of ethics.
Department policies and directives.
Department policies and directives.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the police officer for the city of Camby, Oregon.
Of the police officer for the city of Camby, Oregon.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
It's too late now.
I get to sign? You haven't been to law school, have you?
I have not. I was just always told to make it so they can't read it.
I mean, look at that. We could be brothers. Okay, I got to sign? There you go. I'll give it to the recorder.
Yes.
All right, one last thing. You gotta pin the badge on you. I believe your wife Rachel is going to come up?
They're going to actually put a...
It's pinned, not staff.
Yes, yes, you do.
So Steve, welcome to the city of Camby.
Thank you.
Give us your chance if you'd like to say anything.
I'm not big on speeches, but it's been great since I've been here for the last few weeks, and I appreciate the opportunity. You've given me Chief Trow and everybody at the agency. I want to get to know everybody in the community, and I look forward to meeting more of you and certainly.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And Chief, it's too bad that he doesn't fit in with the whole outdoors theme of most of the officers in our PD, so I don't think he'll fit in at all. Did you want to take a moment and?
Yes, if you can have that.
Yes, if everybody wants, unless, I mean, you guys are more than welcome to hang out for this evening, but we know how this works. No, that's okay. That's entertainment. Oh, all right. Do we have to take a German?
I'm not too, at least, okay?
No, we got work to do. Here we go. The joys of being a city councilor and a mayor. All right, so next up on the agenda is, we have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one is the Camby Prevention Update and Proclamation. And so the proclamation goes as for the, it's so Substance Abuse Prevention Month here in the month coming up here in May. And so whereas the Camby Prevention Coalition has designed May, designated May as a Substance Abuse Prevention Month, to raise awareness of the harms of illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse. Whereas drug overdoses have taken a heartbreaking toll both nationally and locally, illicit opioid misuses and prescription drug misuse is a major public health crisis that negatively impacts the health of our young people, leading to early addiction and death. Whereas illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse negatively affects the health and safety and well-being of those living and working in the Camby community, and whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Camby, Oregon are committed to supporting efforts to educate the public with the objective of changing social norms regarding illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse. We commend the overwhelming majority of our young people who are choosing to remain drug and alcohol-free. We believe all of, we believe all of the youth need to be aware of the risks and harms of illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse, and to encourage those that need help to seek services. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Camby proclaims our support and offers an invitation to the entire community to join us to raise awareness of the dangers of illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse, thereby improving the health and safety of all members of our community. We invite individuals, families, governments, schools, religious, and civic organizations to participate in the sponsor activities that heighten awareness regarding the dangers of illicit opioid use and prescription drug misuse. Given to my hand on this day, what is today, May 3rd, 2023, and I believe we've got a couple of people here, Trevor Higgins and Jackie Jones, to give us an update. You guys want to come on up?
I'm not sure we had a definite update to give you all, but we've been, this is our, we're just finishing up our first year as the Camby Prevention Coalition, so that's pretty exciting that we've done a lot of in the last few months to try to make our community a lot safer regarding health benefits.
And I just personally want to say thank you, Mayor, City Council. Two years ago, I didn't even know where Camby was. I just kind of took a drive from Oregon City and ended up stopping here over at the Ackerman Center. I met with an individual, and they asked me, "What do you want to do here?" And I said, "I just want to help." And that was all I wanted to do. And I look back on my journey to here with this proclamation, and I am humbled, and I am so grateful for the city of Camby, its residents, for all of you, for the trust that you have instilled in me and the Camby Prevention Coalition, its members. I feel like we're helping. I feel like we're help, we're here to help, we're here to make things, I guess, just enhance what we're already doing well here in Camby. Again, thank you for your trust. Thank you for just being Camby, making it the best it can. And we continue to do our work to help residents here. So, thank you. Sorry, I was getting a little bit choked up there. I had to kind of recover, but thank you. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for looking over this proclamation. This is just the first step. And so we are meeting regularly, so please come out to our meetings. Please continue to be involved. We have a lot more work ahead of us, and we're just excited to get to work. So thank you.
Well, Trevor, appreciate everything that you have done, and glad that you found Camby, but don't tell anyone, okay? No, in all seriousness, no, appreciate the work that you have started and what you all continue to do. It is a very tragic situation that is occurring right now with that on a national level, and so if we can do anything here in town to squelch it would be great, but to dampen it would be, is a start. So I'm glad that you're here, so thank you. I have this for you. It's for you all to take back to the rest of the group and share.
Thank you so much.
It's good to see you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Each of you guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much. So the next proclamation I have is for recognition of May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. So the proclamation up here is, whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illness illnesses are prevalent in our county, state, and nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. Whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to clearly, to early identification and effective treatment of individuals with mental illness and their ability to recover to lead full, productive lives. Whereas approximately half of chronic mental illness begins at the age of 14, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death of individuals ages 10 to 14 and 35 to 34. Whereas long delays averaging 11 years occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, and it is therefore essential to cure the stigma and discrimination that is the primary cause for those delays. Whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping cure the stigma and discrimination that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas public education and civic engagement improves the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Camby, a municipal corporation, the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, due hereby proclaim May 20th, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, to promote identification and timely treatment of mental illness, and to cure the resulting stigma and discrimination. Given unto my hand this third day of May 2023. I believe we have, yes, hello, sir?
So I also come bearing gifts, although, you know, unlike my mother told me, never bring gifts unless you have enough for everybody. I don't have enough for everybody, but I have enough for each of the councilors. This is an official NAMI-Clackamas stress ball, guaranteed to relieve all stress and anxiety in 30 minutes or less, or you get your money back.
30 minutes or less, or you get the money back.
Leaving the mayor out, my understanding is he was concerned about putting them over the gift threshold.
I have no stress, so I don't need a stress ball.
There you go. It's usually the mayor that gives it out, right, then puts it in. So, and I have a brief presentation here as well, but I want to, first of all, thank you all. Gary Marskey, I'm the Hour-Reaching Development Manager for NAMI-Clackamas, that's the National Alliance on Mental Illness in Clackamas County. And we, and I want to thank you very much for taking the time. This is the first time, I believe, that we've had a proclamation in the city of Camby. We were very fortunate that we were able to actually have seven cities in Clackamas County this year declare May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and Camby was the first in line, so thank you very much for that. And Brandon is joining me here. He's going to update you on some of the efforts of the Behavioral Health Unit for Camby, what Camby Police. But what I want to do is go through this brief presentation about NAMI and NAMI-Clackamas. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. We provide education, support, and advocacy for everyone that experiences mental health issues regardless. We do that by providing classes, support groups, and individual advocacy and navigation services, as well as community presentations. We do that using volunteers with lived experience, and we do all of those things with barrier-free. It means no cost, no insurance required, no referral required, no diagnosis required. All that's required is you raise your hand, walk in the door, give us a call, and tell us that you need help. So to evidence some of the things, some of the necessities for our services, here are some eye-opening stats. Every year, what we find is that, we mentioned, one in five adults experience a mental health issue in any given year. I think one of the other ones in there is that suicide occurs every 11 and a half minutes. Another one that we highlight is that while the national rate of suicide is 13.8 deaths per 100,000. per 100,000, in Clackamas County, we're not doing quite so well. It's 18.8 per 100,000, and it is the second-leading cause of death among 10- to 14-year-olds, 15- to 24-year-olds, and 24- to 35-year-olds. So, if you go all the way from 10 to 35, it is the second-leading cause of death. There are a lot of other statistics that really warrant the services that NAMI and other organizations provide, as well as the police department. So, that gives you a few of the statistics. This is our, our mission statement. I think the most important thing is, in that mission statement, is again, it's offered free of charge since 1978. We have a great deal of lived experience ourselves, evidenced by the fact that those folks are all wearing tie-dye t-shirts. So, that is definitely fashion sense in the 70s, if you want to call it sense. Anyway, since 1978. What we offer are free classes. We have three classes, peer-to-peer, family-to-family, and basics. There are six and eight-week classes. These are for people who are experiencing mental health issues, as well as their family members, their loved ones, people who care for and about them. And the NAMI basics is for parents of younger children. Very often, in the 6 to 13 range, we find that there are lots of behaviors that might indicate mental health issues. They also might indicate normal growing-up behavior, risk-taking, things like that. So, you want to know the difference. And the basics class helps parents and caregivers know the difference and helps them learn how to advocate for their little ones. That's really something that's very, very important, because they often can't advocate for themselves. So, those are the classes that we offer, both in-person and online at this point. We also have free presentations in our own voice, I call the ultimate empathy builder. It really humanizes this thing called mental illness by putting faces with names, or faces with illnesses. Mental Health 101 is a presentation that goes out to the community in general, helps educate the community about mental health, so that there's a little bit more understanding and a little bit less stigma. We do lunch and learns for businesses all over the county to help them and their employees understand mental health and things that they can do. And then Ending the Silence is one of my favorite programs, because it goes into middle and high schools, and it teaches the middle and high school students about mental health and mental illness. It also gives them tools and action steps that they can take to help themselves and their friends when they're experiencing a crisis. And then we have free support groups, we have two of them. Peer support group that meets weekly, those are three of those on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Sunday. And then we have a family support group, three of them that meet once a month, first Monday, second Tuesday, and third Saturday. And then our Open Minds Art Studio, which is an arts and crafts group that meets online. And we have a bi-weekly suicide bereavement group for those survivors that are left behind after a suicide. And then our one-on-one help, that is two of our peer resource coordinators who provide resources and navigation for folks who are experiencing a crisis, whether it's a family member or an individual. And when I say navigation, they walk you through the entire process. They don't leave you sitting there with a referral and say, okay, you're on your own. They will be with you through the entire process. And once again, I want to emphasize that all of these services are barrier-free. They're free of cost, no diagnosis, no insurance required, no referral. Good things happen when people in crisis meet people who have been there. That's what NAMI is all about. It's all about peer-delivered services and people feeling that they are not alone, because they're in and around people who are experiencing the same things that they are, and they've recovered. They're in the recovery process and they're living their best lives. Okay? That's it for my presentation. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen. And if you have any questions, I'll be here. In the meantime, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon to talk about what the Canby Police Behavioral Unit is doing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary. I really appreciate this opportunity. I got to say, we're very fortunate to have the Clackamas County Chapter of NAMI. Time and time again, I hear and am telling other people that they are one of the most active chapters in the nation in providing resources, and we get to have that right here locally and having that support. And I've sent many people to them for additional support as well. I would like to start off by saying that I have cured all mental illness in Canby. Obviously, I can't say that, so I'm going to take a few steps back in saying we are making some great strides in creating community connection. I've been an active member with Suicide Prevention Task Force here in Canby. We've been creating connections with Project Hope to help with the opioid response and providing direct referrals and immediate contact for individuals that are struggling with opioid addiction. And we've also been providing, in addition to my immediate responses to peoples that have been, people in crisis, continuous follow-up with other police reports, because unfortunately, it's just one of me and I can't be on 24/7. My wife would be very upset. So, we are definitely doing great things, and I have to thank Chief Trow here for having the foresight and bringing me on. It's behavioral health specialist in a city of this size is very uncommon. It is expanding, as it should be, but we're also creating strong and long-lasting relationships with other behavioral health units in other cities, like Oswego, Westland, Oregon City, Milwaukee, too, we can provide more continuity of coverage and provide support for each other to make sure that the citizens of Canby have the support they need when they are in a crisis. And if we can get there before they're in that crisis situation, we'll do that as well and try and provide support wherever we can. I feel like we're making some great strides, definitely getting some great connections. Obviously, I know a lot of you at this point in time, and I hope to expand to those that I don't know as well. And if there's anything I can do to support you further, I really appreciate your input. And also, if there's anything else you need from me, feel free to yell at me, shoot me, email, text, whatever. I respond best to yelling. That's the army side. I apologize for that, so. But I really do want to thank you for everything that you guys have done and providing this and advancing, and ending the stigma, and trying to provide support to our community members to make sure everybody can live their best life here in Canby. Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention 988, the new 911 for mental health issues. It's available not just for individuals experiencing mental health issues, but also their families, friends, anybody. So, anybody who's experiencing or is around somebody, call 988. There is also HB 2757 in front of the state legislature, which adds a 50-cent surcharge onto the cell phone bill to fully fund 988. We know that our, our federal government is very, very prone to providing mandates without funding and without infrastructure. It's left to us, and the state has to do it. So, if you can lend your support to HB 2757, that would be wonderful. We'd really appreciate that.
Well, Gary, thank you very much for coming and giving us an update. It's, yeah, those are tough numbers to see, very much so. And Brandon, thank you for the work that you've quickly done in jumping in once getting hired here. So, we, I'm glad that the council and Chief Trow have made the, made the decision to do that. And I think getting in early is best on something like this, so please let us know how we can support both of you and, you know, NAMI and, as well as you and your role as well. So, I have this for you, Gary, to take back. Can I get you to take a quick picture of us?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing. Or maybe we can get you to do it and get both of us. Get off your golf game.
Get off my golf game.
Tell you how much focus he's paying.
Exactly. I've got lots of focus, huh? It's not a golf game, it's coaching strategy.
Yep, yep. It's a picture of me, but. Let's get over here. Do either side or I'll understand.
Here, I'm pretty.
All right, there you go there. Thank you, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
There we go. Let's get the wide angle on. Awesome. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
I'll take my bag.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's what kind of handed later.
Last but not least, on the proclamation front, it is National Association of Letter Carriers National Food Drive Day. Whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, in conjunction with the National Rural Letter Carriers Association, the U.S. Postal Service, UFCW, United Way, AFL-CIO, VALPAC, Local Food Pantries, Velasis, and Kellogg's are coordinating a non-perishable food drive, and whereas the Canby Center food pantry is in need of food at all times. And whereas local food bank shelves are continually in need of replenishment due to the ongoing dramatic increase in the need for food. And whereas last year, 6,421,000 pounds of healthy food was collected by the Canby Center food pantry. That's a lot of food. Whereas during the last six months, the Canby Center food pantry has provided a total of 16,792 meals for preparation. And whereas the local letter carriers will collect non-perishable food items placed by the mailboxes on Saturday, May 13th. At Saturday, May 13th, put out your bags of food for the letter carriers. Now, therefore, I, Brian Hossen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 13th, 2023, as National Association of Letter Carriers National Food Drive Day, and urge all citizens of the city of Canby to participate in this worthwhile event by donating non-perishable food items to help feed those who are in need. Given unto my hand this third day of May, 2023, and Eileen, I believe you are accepting this?
Steve Nelson from the Canby Center, who is accepting this as well as accepting the food that the city council and mayor has brought up, so.
Perfect.
Steve has a few words to mention.
I think I'm going to collect food before I talk. Just do that first. Get this started.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if this thing will pair that.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Steve, here's another bag if you, that one gets too heavy.
Yeah, sorry. I have an over here.
It's about to pull the bottom there, because I don't want to break open under there.
Yeah.
While Steve is, oh, Irene Bouchier's retired letter carrier from the Canby Post Office, we have a little correction. Because of the COVID and because of, if you've seen and heard on the news, letter carriers have really been attacked, and also, we're having a huge shortage of employees. So, we felt this year, trying to get back on track, that instead of the mailboxes, because we're short carriers and they're out there until 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, and I've heard some places, 11 o'clock at night. It's really tough, so we made the decision to try this year, bring it to the Canby Post Office lobby. So, you will see Stamp Out Hunger that you have here, and signs at the Canby Post Office, and you'll be bringing your food to the Canby Post Office lobby, and the clerks will be there to, and staff from the Canby Center food pantry, and myself, to collect the food on Saturday, May 13th. And we know, we talked to the supervisor, we know that people say, oh, yeah, the food drive, they may put it in the mailboxes, but if you could pass the word along, it's to the Canby Post Office lobby to help alleviate the crush of mail and packages for our carriers. So, we want this to, to go, so it's kind of experimental, because we've been doing it for 24 years, and everyone's sticking it in their mailboxes and hanging it off the mailboxes, so it's hard to remember, oh, the shift here. So, I present Steve Nelson to talk about the, oh, thunder, oh, yeah.
Well, I thought that was the lights turning on outside, yeah.
Well, I, you know, we are recipients of the generous gifts of our city and grateful for the post office role in making this happen. It's an ongoing national program that's had amazing impact in our country for many, many years. Last three years, we haven't been able to do it at all, and so I kind of feel like it's getting back on the horse here. So, we're excited about that. The impact that's going to have through the Canby Center, so often people come to the Canby Center as just a hub of resources, and people come in needing an emergency food box or something like that, and we have those resources available to them largely through this type of activity. People coming in and donating canned goods that we can keep in our shelves and keep our pantry stocked. So, we appreciate your support and really looking forward to getting back on the horse this, this time.
Well, thank you both for coming, and, you know, Irene, your continued work on this and all the other things you do in our community, appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everyone's cooperation and stuff. So, again, it's Saturday, May 13th, and if you see a carrier, you know, or the clerk at the post office, just tell him thank you, you know, for doing this.
Yeah.
And I would be remiss also that the Little Red Poppy, May is, of course, Military Family Appreciation Month for our veterans, military, and Memorial Day to remember those that served. And we just thank you for the opportunity, again, to present the food drive. We said one in eight go hungry, and they broke it down to children, or in the one in eight that go hungry. Senior citizens, one in eight, they go hungry. And they now included veterans, if you can believe it, we have veterans that go hungry and that they have to come to pantries and food banks, too. So, there is one in, I believe it's in Clackamas County, it's called Amen, and that was done at a Damascus church in 2005, that they focused on military people who didn't have enough, I can't believe it, monies to have food for their families. So, this has grown, you know, statewide, Amen. So, when you help us out here, you're helping everyone. So, thank you for that opportunity to give back to our community. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Steve.
Oh, yes, and we're going to weigh it out, so thank you very much.
Next on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the appointment of Member Hannah Ellison to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2024, the appointment of Member Jennifer Driscoll to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2023, and the approval of the off-premises OLCC application for Odomo's Pizza LLC located at 1017 Southwest 1st Avenue.
I will second. Motion has been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Council Varwig to approve the consent agenda that includes the appointment of Hannah Ellison to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2024, the appointment of Jennifer Driscoll to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2023, and the approval of the off-premise OLCC application for Odomo's Pizza LLC located at 1017 Southwest 1st Avenue. Any comment or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That carries 6-0. Next up, our series of ordinances for us this evening. The first one is ordinance number 1595, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a 16-month lease and service contract with Pacific Office Automation, and this is a second reading, so anything that you wanted to add, Scott, to the?
Nothing new, Mayor. Just a reminder that this is for the purpose of consolidating several copy, printer copier machines, and there will be some savings to the city, as well as some efficiencies for managing just one contract instead of a number of these.
Perfect. Any other, any questions or for staff on this? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 1595, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a 16-month lease and service contract with Pacific Office Automation.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Great motion's been made by Council Varwig and seconded by Council Patton to adopt ordinance number 1595, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a 16-month lease and service contract with Pacific Office Automation. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Councilor Patton?
Aye.
Councilor Maldonado?
Aye.
Councilor Varwig?
Aye.
Councilor Banks?
Aye.
Councilor Davis?
Aye.
And Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance is number 1597, an ordinance amending a text amendment rectifying erroneous deletion in chapter 16.10.010.0B, adopted under the TA 22-01. It's also a second reading. Should we call Dawn up and have her, since he's here, get her money's worth?
That's right.
Dawn, would you like to come and explain us the situation here?
For a second reading?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will keep it really short. This, again, was an erroneous error addressing, this is the food cart ordinance, and this corrects the error that was unintended, and is dealing with parking specifically for food carts, and was intended to be that way, and unfortunately, the text revision ended up becoming ubiquitous. revision ended up becoming ubiquitous across a much bigger spectrum unintentionally, uh, and that would have resulted, or would result in, that error would result in, um, removing parking restrictions, uh, that are in the downtown area. So essentially, um, that was not the intent, so this is just to clean that up and to correct it.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Patton?
Uh, I move to adopt ordinance number 1597, an ordinance amending Canby's Title 16 of the Canby Municipal Code to restore the, uh, intended language of MCU Section 16.10. 10.B.TA 2301 on second reading with a roll call vote.
I'll say. Okay, motion's been made by Council Patton and seconded by Council Varwick to approve ordinance number 1597, an ordinance amending a text amendment rectifying erroneous deletion in Chapter 16.10.010.B, which was adopted under TA 22-01. Be a roll call vote, I'm just saying this, Dawn, um, and for those of you up here, so last, past Friday, I spoke at, uh, the Rotary Lunch to give kind of a pseudo state of the city address, and, um, and during the question and answer period, food carts came up for discussion, and, um, there's a lot of excitement about what's being talked about and what's currently in the, in the planning department being reviewed for, for the food cart piece, so, um, whatever the error was, I'm glad we're getting it fixed, and, um, but yeah, there's a ton of excitement about the food cart piece, so I'm glad that we're moving that forward, so thank you, Dawn. Um, okay, uh, roll call vote.
Councilor Patton?
Aye.
Councilor Maldonado?
Aye.
Councilor Varwick?
Aye.
Councilor Banks?
Aye.
Councilor Davis?
Aye.
And Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
See what happens when you come to these meetings?
Wasn't intended to speak, but...
I know, that's why I called you up. Uh, next, um, under ordinances is ordinance number 1598, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurance to, uh, for a second reading coming up on May 17th, 2023. You're just on it.
On it. Hello, my name is Todd Wood, I'm the Transit and Fleet Director of the City of Canby, for those of you who have not before. Um, we'll start with the, uh, insurance portion of this. Uh, for, there's enough new people here, just to let you know. The City of Canby owns, um, all of the transit. We own all the facilities, we own all the vehicles, uh, we maintain all the vehicles, and since its inception in 2002, we have insured all the vehicles. However, all the vehicles are operated by a contractor. All our dispatches contract, and the employees are managed by a contractor. This year, um, CIS Board decided that that was too high of a liability for the members of CIS, and so they voted to discontinue all liability coverage for any vehicle that is operated by a contract employee. Unfortunately for us, that means that, uh, you know, either the contractor can't operate the vehicles, or I have to get new liability insurance. Um, I called, uh, multiple different insurance companies, and they all said the same thing, we're not gonna cover the liability of a contractor, so my alternative then was to go to the contractor and say, I need you to provide your own liability insurance, which ultimately means I provide liability insurance through the contractor. Uh, so this amends the contract, because currently the contract says that the city will provide first liability up to Oregon tort limits, and now the contractor will provide first liability up to the Oregon tort limits and second liability as required through our grant programs to the state and federal government. Um, it'll amount to about $40,000 to $50,000, it's based on miles, so it's 12 cents a mile, so depending on the number of miles my vehicle's operating a month, they will bill us monthly for that amount, and will pay that amount. Questions on that? The second piece of this then is the expansion of the Canby Loop. Uh, we, uh, the Canby Loop is funded fully, I shouldn't say fully, it's not fully funded, it is, uh, funded contract-wise as far as operation through the State Transportation Improvement Fund, that is the HB 2017 dollars. The first, uh, use of HB 2017 was to add, uh, Saturday service for, um, the 99X and our dialer ride service, and then we added the Canby Loop about a year and a half ago. It's done very well, we're providing around 1,400 to 1,500 rides per month, a lot of the high school students use it, since the school system does not provide bus service for anybody who lives within a certain distance, but we do, so we have a lot of students that are running our vehicles. We have a lot of people who've started jumping on the vehicle, because it is free and it loops every 28 minutes. We've got a lot of requests to expand it to Saturday, and we've got enough money to expand it to Saturday. Uh, our original contract had, uh, the hours set for our current service, so this adds the hours needed for the loop, about 5,000 hours, and increases the contract amount to allow the contractor to operate that. Those are the two amendments.
Great. Thank you, Dawn.
Yes.
It's great to, it's great to hear that the, we're expanding the loop.
Yeah.
That's great.
Seems to be working well.
Good. Very good. Questions?
I'll make a motion if there's no questions.
Okay. Well, is there, I'm not seeing any ques-
I have a question, but I can pay the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1598, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Inc. of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurance to a second reading on May 17th, 2023.
Can I second? Uh, motion's been made by, uh, Council Varwick and seconded by Council Maldonado to approve ordinance number 1598, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Inc. of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurance for, up for a second reading on May 17th, 2023. And Council Patton, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, um, so like, and I have my green button then. Uh, so with the, uh, like, now expanding to Saturdays, especially during the summer if we have various events and such going on in the city, do you usually use a big bus or a little bus for this loop?
We use the 20-foot bus. So that'd be the medium-sized bus.
Medium-sized bus, okay.
We have 35-foot buses, um, normally a 40, but we can only do 35, because that's all Oregon City Transit will handle for us.
Okay.
And then we have smaller buses, around 20 or so, that handle dialer ride service, and then we have medium buses that are about 28.
Okay.
That we use for the loop.
So I was, I was thinking, it kind of strikes me, if it's on, if this is gonna be run out on a Saturday, I don't know if there's any way, if there's like, if there's a big event at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds or something like that, or the Event Center, and, you know, if there's the ability, if there's gonna be like a surge in ridership, if there's the ability to, to adapt the bus to, like, the usage on a Saturday, or something along those lines?
It's possible, it all depends on what that looks like. We do, um, and I can't remember the name of the event that happens on Fridays, uh, once in a while, we have expanded the loop's hours into the evening to accommodate that Friday event.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I don't remember the name of it.
It's all good.
Um, and, and usually we have to, we, this all requires us to get the contractors' buy off, obviously, because we have to expand their hours, but we, we usually work with the city if they think there might be a need and see what we can do with that, so.
Okay, and I guess my, my other part to that would be, if this is the case, this might actually be something good for you folks to partner with the Event Center and maybe Jamie and stuff to sort of bill that service on a Saturday to, to like tie it into these events as a, as another thing to say, hey, you're here in town, if you don't wanna try to drive downtown and park, you can take the bus from this place and, and really start to like, like, um, uh, promote that.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got the hours for Saturday down yet, so we'll work with her as well as our advisory board to figure out what hours. We know we're gonna do about 12 hours a day, which is what we do during the week, but we probably don't need to start at 6:00 AM, because 6:00 AM is for school and work.
Okay.
And most people aren't doing that on Saturday. Well, you know.
Just a thought I was having, I wanted to throw out there.
Something more like a shuttle service?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Good dialogue. Any other comments or questions? All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes six zero. Thanks, Todd, appreciate it. Um, next ordinance is, um, ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expand, or expand payment to, uh, city-county insurance services, otherwise CIS, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and that is a first reading, and Joe?
And this, uh, is something that you're probably familiar with, uh, if you've been here, which is every year we have to pay our insurance provider. We have actually two insurance providers now, because CIS also stopped doing a few years ago workers' comp, which will be the next one. Um, this is an attempt, uh, and, uh, out of deference for folks who do not like the emergency clause, to make sure that we pay, pay it up in a way that we don't have to rely on an emergency, because we know it's coming.
Right.
Um, I happen to be meeting with Tim Gustafson, our, uh, insurance provider here in town, uh, early next week for the actual number, um, so hopefully it will be less than this, it was, I think it was 424 last year or something like that. It might have gone up a bit, we're trying to account for that. Um, and then, uh, the other piece, just so I can speak to both of them, uh, SAFE is a hard and fast number, but in the past, if, depending on how the year goes, sometimes SAFE gives you a discount on your next year to all, all the people who are in the pool. So even though that's $94,000 number, uh, I think in the past we've gotten like, you know, 10,000 or more back, uh, to go towards the next year, so.
Okay.
And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Any other, any comments or questions, sorry, not comments, but questions for Mr. Lindsey? No?
I appreciate you trying to avoid any clause, I love that. I move to approve ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to expand payment to city-county insurance services, CIS, in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance co- coverage for fiscal year 2023, 24, to a second reading on May 17th, 2023.
One second. Uh, motion's been made to approve ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expand payment to city-county insurance services, CIS, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024, uh, up for a second reading on May 17th, 2023. Any further discussion? I've seen none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries over to the next meeting. Yes, Council Banks?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1600, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expand payment to SAFE Corporation in the amount of $94,274,000 for workers' comp and coverage for fiscal year 23, 24, to a second reading May 17th.
Second. Uh, motion made by Council Banks and seconded by Council Davis to approve ordinance number, uh, 1600, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expand payment to SAFE Corporation in the amount of $94,274 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries six zero.
And, Your Honor, just so you know, by the next reading, I should have those hard and fast numbers, so you'll know what you're voting on this second.
Right. Joe, is there, there been a trend in past years on what we've seen percentage-wise? Increase for especially the, not so much SAFE, but the CIS?
It seemed like things normalized and kind of flattened out a little bit, but I think you can expect kind of a 10-plus percent.
Yeah.
So.
Seems to be the general trend on, nice round number of 10% on everything, so, um, okay, thanks. Um, next item on the agenda is some new business, and that's the discussion, um, and selection of an interim city administrator. Um, so, um, as many of you may or may not know, um, Mr. Archer is leaving us on Friday. Friday is his last day. Kind of like, like I said last week, got a very good opportunity to, um, take a position at the City of Salem, um, and so he'll be thick in his wheelhouse with parks and community stuff and, and whatnot, but, um, uh, I'll save my comments for the end of the meeting, but so with that being said, we have, um, we have to fill an interim role, um, for the, for the time being, um, and so in the packets were a couple of, um, options, so, uh, direction of the council, um, I was asked to go out and look at some different, um, candidates and options through League of Oregon Cities. Um, I did go through, um, the resumes that were posted there and sent those on. Um, one of the candidates did not, um, respond back, and as of reaching out again today, there was no response back, uh, or hadn't seen anything. The other candidate, um, which was, she has accepted a position, I believe, temporarily, um, filling a position in another city here in Oregon, and so that, uh, the other person, Eileen Stein, um, I've talked with her a couple of times, and, um, she's, um, very interested, comes very highly recommended from, um, Barry Elsner and Hammond, um, who've worked with her in the past. I did get, um, had a conversation with the City of Malala, and both the city administrator and the mayor there have worked with this person and highly recommend her, um, to fill that role on an interim basis as well. Um, so that's what's before us this evening, so I think through the conversation, um, that we had earlier and in previous meetings, um, I think that was, um, self-moving for direction from the council to, um, I guess, reach out and, and begin contract pieces with the interim, and again, um, you know, uh, Mr. Lindsey is, uh, back in action and is expressing interest as well as in being, um, moving into the interim role for the time being, so, um, put that out there as a conversation piece as well, so.
Are you looking for a motion?
A, a motion or conversation, a direction to go. Um, the next step would be, um, if we go, um, with the recommendation of Eileen Stein, then next piece would be contacting her and begin, uh, the contract piece with her. Um, she would then presumably need to do a background check, and we'd figure on a start date to be, hopefully, fairly soon. Um, my understanding with my conversation with her is, um, that she's, she lives here in the area and would be willing to, um, get started as quickly as we can get background checks done and whatnot.
Well, in that case, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to initiate, or to initiate a contract with Eileen Stein and a background check in order to, um, bring her onboard as our interim city administrator.
Second. Okay. Um, any comment or discussion?
Uh, maybe I should add to start as soon as possible, hopefully by next Monday.
We will work on that piece.
It'll be a Friday for a handoff, it'll be good.
Any comment or any other discussion pieces?
No, I just, I, I mean, I've looked through, um, her resume, and it's very lengthy, and, um, I, I am confident that she would be able to do the job, so.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nate?
So that motion to, for me to go and with the assistance of Ashley Driscoll to go through and, and begin that conversation, um, question is regarding the creation and working of the contract. Um, Joe, you are our city attorney, is that?
No.
Something that you?
I'm happy to help in any-
Help out, okay. I appreciate that, thank you, sir. Um, okay, so we will move forward with that, um, and I will reach out to Eileen, uh, first thing in the morning and, and begin that conversation, and, um, we will move on from there, so, and I'll keep you posted on what that situation looks like. Okay? Thank you all for that. Um, moving into mayor's business, um, not a whole lot, uh, Clackamas County Coordinated Committee is tomorrow evening. Um, the Metro Mayor's Group, uh, that I meet with, um, has been following a number of bills, so our last meeting was really- has been following a number of bills. Our last meeting was really just a bulk, heavy legislative update on the number of the bills that we were following. A lot of them that we're following are the homelessness and housing bills. The big thing on the one homeless bill. Yeah, thank you. That one that we've been following, I think was just recently voted on and, no, it's still in process.
They have a public hearing, yes, for tomorrow, but we pulled it from the agenda and it looks like, from what I understand, it could be as good as dead. I will know more than to leave.
The other, there is a number of housing bills you guys?
There was an article that they claimed that certain steps weren't taken in time, but that they're basically pulling it for this session. But again, that's not gospel, but I mean, that was an article I just read today.
I don't really think anything's dead till Sonny die, but you know, but it's dead for now.
All right. The other, the other piece, there is a number of housing bills right now that are really critical to, and this, we talked about this in the mayor's group, that really are aimed, well, we take it as an aim of eroding home rule for the cities in regard to how we plan and how we orchestrate our future growth. A number of those look to really move big chunks of the planning process and approval process to the state level and taking it out of the hands of the city. And so those are ones that we are watching, that that particular group is watching very closely. If you've not been following the legislature, you may have seen that the tolling and congestion pricing conversation has been placed on pause. And so really what that means is that the conversation still continues. The governor finally has heard enough from those of us in Clackamas County about the whole tolling and congestion pricing piece and has temporarily put it on pause. So either for more discussion and whatnot. And so just a big thank you to the council here for, you know, following that topic and allowing me to be engaged in that process. And I want to thank, I mean, really the cities across Clackamas County and the the county, sorry, the Board of County Commissioners. There's a lot of work put into that. And so, and even our legislator delegation from Clackamas County. So it's not totally over with, but at least it's on pause to maybe look at other options than tolling and congestion pricing because, again, we think that there are other options other than tolling and congestion pricing. So there'll be more on that, but at least for now it's more open for more, hopefully more discussion. Couple of fun events coming up. The Canby Brew Fest is coming up here in a couple of weekends. So get your tickets for that. Some great music, some great food carts. And that'll be over at the Event Center. And then also, the Event Center this year is starting, it's the first that they've done other than Hair Fest, which is also again this summer. But a concert series at the Event Center. So this summer they're going to have three different music acts, some pretty big ones. I think the first one that is up is Social Distortion. So if you're a big Social D fan of, as Barry Johnson looks quizzically as to who the heck is Social D. Mr. Johnson, that would be a rock slash punk band from the.
I'm well aware.
Oh, okay, good. One of the other music acts is the Indigo Girls. So that would be another. So some really big concert draws for the Event Center. So that's pretty exciting for that. And then tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM is the Canby City Prayer Breakfast. And that's going to be in the town hall at Cuts Forest. So it'll be a small breakfast and, you know, just various city leaders. And I believe the speaker tomorrow is Superintendent Dr. Downs. So he's going to be the main speaker for tomorrow at the City Prayer Breakfast. So if you can attend, it'd be great. That concludes my items. We'll move on to council comments and liaison reports. And we're going to start in the middle of the dais with Councilor Varwig.
First time for everything.
I know, and I gotta keep track where I started and where I left off. I got the heavy job.
Yeah, thank you. No, I don't have a whole lot to report tonight. I'm just excited to announce that we finally have a full planning commission. So that's fantastic. So welcome to the new members. And we do still have some spots open on the Transit Advisory Committee. Two spots open, so please continue to think about that one. You got some great information from Transit tonight, so I won't go anything there. But I just want to take a minute, Scott, to say thank you for two and a half years of service with us here at Canby. And I very much appreciate all that you've done for us and the things that you have brought across this dais and you have made Canby a better place. And so I wish you the best of luck in your new adventure and thank you very much.
That's it?
That's all.
Councilor Banks?
I also have no liaison reports. Neither of my committees have met since our last meeting. I want to echo Councilor Varwig and thanks God for his service. I'm going to miss you. And also to welcome back Joe. It's nice to have you back. It's nice to, it looks normal again and will for two days. And then we'll be half-normal again for a while. Thank you, Scott.
Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Barry Johnson, for your report. So you shortened my report up quite a bit today. Just a few things. The park renaming process, did we finish that? Or it was going to be on this agenda, I believe, or?
Yes, so that has been looked at and reviewed. And in light of trying to catch up on some other things, I, we will see that probably at the next meeting. For sure, I'll be that and cross that off our list.
And Artisan Gardens, thank you to the Park and Rec Committee, a number of volunteers who went out and helped plant ten azaleas out there. And we did a lot of cleanup out there. And thank you to Jeff Snyder for being there with us on that Saturday. Everybody worked really hard on getting that park cleaned up and planting those plants. So great job to the Park and Rec Committee and a number of volunteers that showed up too. So thank you to those volunteers that showed up as well. Like I said, Barry touched on pretty much everything else and it's on schedule. So we'll stay on top of those as well. The Canby Adult Center has moved their meeting to the 17th because of some conflicts. I've assured Kathy Robinson at the Adult Center that we will continue to move those projects forward that we started with the Canby Adult Center as far as the remodel goes and the plans that we had to work with them. And I'll keep the council up to date on how we're doing with that as well at the Adult Center. And the Fire Department, of course, we held our open houses this past weekend. Believe it or not, we've been very busy with brush fires already this year. Two acre brush fire on Friday during the heat and another one on Saturday. So we just ask people to, mostly into blackberry bushes. And then once they get into the blackberry bushes, they take off. And so even though we've had a lot of rain, things are still, for whatever reason, very dry and have built up. So please be careful out there. And that concludes.
Do you suppose those are accidental?
Well, no, yeah, no, this, the one, it was on Dietz Air Park, on the backside of Dietz Air Park. And it's under the transmission lines. And the witnesses heard a loud explosion during the, and so we don't know if it was something to do with the transmission lines, but there, the burn pile that was very, very, very small was quite a ways away from where the fire actually was. So we attributed something to do underneath the power lines.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilor Pat?
So the school board and county utility are going to be next week. I would be in Grants Pass at a close over the main sale meeting, so I will have to tune into those later. I attended the Clackamas City's dinner meeting along with the mayor last week. So I attended the Clackamas City's dinner meeting last week with the mayor. And it was held at Happy Valley, in Happy Valley. And the Happy Valley folks did a presentation. And let me tell you something. They are building some awesome stuff over there. Like Happy Valley has no downtown core, so they decided they're just going to buy land and build one. And I think that's pretty awesome. And so I told the mayor that we need to start building some stuff here. We had a little bit of a conversation back and forth about that. We'll, we'll get, we'll do something more later. But anyways, no, so that was really good. The food was great. It was great meeting folks there. I attended the Chamber Luncheon yesterday, which was great to see the businesses and interact with some folks there. Last time I had asked about, in the staff report, there was, for the Finance Department, there was a thing that said like various tasks that are falling behind or they're trying to catch up on. And I'd asked if there was a more detailed list that could be provided of those. And I wasn't sure if there's any progress being made on that or not.
So Finance Director Eric Kaitola will actually be at council's next meeting two weeks from tonight. And I will suggest to him that he respond at that point in time to that. That was, I was kind of holding on that since I didn't hear any way to give you. And then if you have any follow-up questions or anything.
Perfect. And then one thing I think we should probably do, I'd like to maybe see at a future meeting, is look at either creating policy or how we want to go about doing it as far as defining the interaction between counselors and city staff when they have questions or concerns about the city. I think that would go a long ways to kind of getting our house in order. So I would like to see something like that on a future meeting, not waiting until our next goal-setting session. And then I too wanted to thank Scott for all of your hard work and dedication here to the city over the last two and a half years. Even though I was not on the city council, I will say that whenever I had a question or concern and I reached out to Scott, he was always happy to meet with me and listen to me, whether I was ranting and raving or not. It was, it was a lot of fun. And I appreciate you carving out some time yesterday to chat with me. I only thought it was going to be about an hour, but I will admit it took three. So I'm sorry to dominate so much of his time before he headed out. And I was going to bring a tiny cake for him because he didn't want one, but I chose not to because I had all that food. So there you go. And that's all I have for my report.
Councilor Maldonado?
I have nothing at this time due to my injury. I was not able to meet the last one. However, we will be meeting next week.
All right. Sounds good. Glad you're back here and appear to be feeling better.
Feeling really good. You know, it's really nice.
Councilor President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I don't have any liaison assignments meeting until later in the month. I haven't had anything since our last meeting. But I do have a couple of questions. In our meeting, the last Urban Renewal Meeting, we had talked about the funding mechanism for community parks. I was just wondering if the Urban Renewal Chair has sent you a memo requesting us to find other funding to reimburse the URA?
Say that one more time about the question.
It was that the Urban Renewal Chair was to send the mayor a memo requesting us to investigate reimbursement plans for the URA?
Not seen one.
Okay.
I'll double check on that.
Thank you, Chair Varwig. Appreciate that. I didn't want that to get lost.
Nice.
I was a little disappointed to not see the ARPA discussion on this agenda since this will be Scott's last meeting. So I'm wondering when that discussion is going to take place?
I will work with, I will work on that with the next, either the next meeting or when Eric gets back. So he'll probably be the one that will be dialing most of that in for us in that conversation.
Okay. And then the same thing, my final question. We're two weeks out on the budget. When are we going to see the actual budget to review?
So the budget is done and it will be going to the printer. And we should be seeing our copies out to us and ready for pickup probably next Wednesday. And then if more copies are needed for the public, then that will be ready that Friday.
Okay. That answers my questions. I wanted to, she's not here, but out in the cyber world, thank Jamie Stickle and Tigler. They did a great job, I think, at the Chamber Luncheon, representing and presenting the city economic plans. That was a wonderful presentation that they did. And finally, Scott, I said everything, I think, on the phone, but I wanted to reiterate how much I do appreciate your contribution to our, our community. And you will be missed here, as I said on the phone. It's sad to see you go, but if you found some opportunity that blesses your family, I'm happy for you. So thank you for your time here and we'll, we'll still be neighbors. So we'll, we'll see you at a coffee shop sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time here.
Thanks. All right. Scott with his last city administrator staff report.
Yes. So I promised to keep it under 45 minutes.
Perfect.
Since it's my last one, just, you know, really. It is indeed very brief, I kid. First thing is, and just to follow on to Councilor Hensley's questions about the budget, I was going to mention this anyway as a reminder for mayor and council and anybody listening, our budget committee meetings are coming up soon. They will be held on May 18th and 25th in this room right here. So just a reminder, those are, of course, are open public meetings. The, as mayor indicated, the first draft of the budget will be distributed next week. There's a kind of an ask or a question, and you don't have to answer it now, but to let us know if. So in an effort to reduce paper use, we're trying to do the draft budget electronically as much as is possible. So Eric and his team will be sending those out electronically to mayor, council, budget committee members and everybody else that receives those. Of course, that gets posted on our website. If you would like a printed copy of that, that is just fine. And, but please just indicate that either in advance. You can let myself or Eric know that you'd like a printed copy. Or when you get the electronic version, you can just reply back at that time and say, can I get a printed version? So just a heads up. I'm sorry, what's that?
Would I be able to print the electronic version?
You will, but it's a substantial document.
That's fine. I've got the resources.
Okay. Just know that you're more than welcome to ask us to print that for you. We'll do that. We're not going to bind those until we get the final version done again, just to save money and resources and all that good stuff, but not a problem to, to make printed copies of those. So anyway, just a reminder of that. And, and then, yes, this is my last meeting. I said my thank yous at the last, at the last meeting, so I won't reiterate that. But just to say that, again, I'm very thankful for the opportunity and appreciate the mayor and council and working with all of you and our great staff team and all of our, all of our community partners and residents. And I thank you all for the nice comments. And I just want to say that I, I wish Canby the absolute best. And I look forward to watching all of your continued successes going forward. I think there are a lot of really exciting and great opportunities in front of us here in Canby. And I'll, I'll watch with excitement as those continue to unfold. So thank you.
So I, I guess I will take my opportunity now and say, Scott, thank you. I have thoroughly enjoyed our working relationship as well as our friendship. And I'll miss our Tuesday Zoom phone call, face-to-face meetings, however we make it work, when we made it work. We've had a number of great successes and I really do thank you for that. I know you've, you've done a tremendous job building a really good director team that I think is going to serve us moving forward. So I appreciate that legacy piece that you're leaving. And, you know, much like everyone said, I do wish you the best there in Salem. I mean, it is Salem, but again, they probably need, they need you more than we do. No, I'm just kidding, Salem. But. Have you been? No, I'm just kidding.
Every week.
But thank you, Scott. You will be missed around here for sure.
I was going to say, I'm not sure what I'm going to do with my Tuesday evenings, although perhaps my future employer has plans for the, for that time slot. But thank you. Appreciate the coming.
I did my best to try to keep them to an hour, but that doesn't always work. So thanks, Scott. Next opportunity for citizen input. If there's any citizens that wish to opine, Barry shakes his head no. The rest of you work for the city. Great. Action review.
You have approved the consent agenda, adopted ordinance 1595 and 1597, approved ordinances 1598, 1599, and 1600 to second readings on May 17th, 2023. And authorized the mayor to initiate a background check and contract with Eileen Stein as interim city administrator to begin as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you for that. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, just a reminder to the council, don't run off yet. We have an Urban Renewal Agency meeting immediately following. And those of you at home are more than welcome to stay and, and watch that. It will be fast. Riving Urban Renewal Agency meeting that will be very quick. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Nay.
I knew it. I knew he was having it eventually.
The motion to adjourn passes five to one. Thank you, Canby. And I think we're going to move right now into our Urban Renewal Agency.
If the meeting never ends.
Could you technically leave? It's gonna be, we got like one idea.
I just want to make sure before I call this meeting order that Gordon is ready to switch us.
Guys, take care.
Good night. Good night.
Give us just a second, make sure.
They stink. I just didn't smell it. Why, why are you smelling them all?
Because I was sitting here like this and I was like, ooh.
I don't know. You have to rub it. I don't know.
All right. Well, we'll get started here in five, four, three, two. Good evening, Canby. Thank you for joining us for our URA meeting for May 3rd, 2023. We will call the meeting to order and the first item after that is citizen input and community announcements. Do we have anybody online? There's nobody in the audience. Nobody online. Perfect. Moving on to old business. And this is to reschedule a date certain of the next URA meeting to May 17th of 2023. And I will pass over to Scott for any explanation. Thank you, Chair Barwig. This is just a brief report. So at the last, at your last meeting, two weeks ago, you set a date certain for tonight. So we, we needed to hold this meeting. You wanted to revisit and have, take a deeper dive on projects and financing and the debt of the district. And I think this is part of that bigger conversation of looking towards the sun setting of the district over the next couple of years or a little more than that. And when you set this date certain for, for this evening, I hadn't recalled at the time, but Finance Director Eric Kaitola had asked for this specific date off as a, as a day off a while back and was not available tonight. I thought it would be imperative that he is here for that conversation. He has a lot of great information teed up and ready to discuss with, with you. He's been working on this for some time, knowing we've been preparing for this conversation. So I conversed with Chair Barwig and asked if you might be able to set, we needed to do this just to reset the date certain tonight. So that's, that's the extent of it. But happy to answer any questions if you'd like. Any questions?
It's pretty self explained, really. I will just throw out just for the good of the order that I had three documents from the last time that conversation happened. And so as I had mentioned in the last URB meeting, I went ahead and emailed them to all the counselors separately in a blind carbon copy setup. So none of them could just reply all. See, I'm super smart. And so I did send that out to everybody. So, so they have that old information.
Great. Thank you for doing that, Jason.
Speaker Banks.
So just as a other, other point of order, not related to really directly to this, but I'm not going to be able to attend the next URA meeting or city council meeting or the first budget meeting. My, I have a nephew who's graduating from high school in Colorado. Begone that week.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Would it be, are you looking for a specific date to hold that or just that it be at the?
I will look to our legal.
Date to be determined?
I know this was a date certain, so I think we need to set a new date certain.
Well, you can, you can set that date certain, yes. And, and that's a better idea. And I, I would remind you that when you pass the budget for the city, you'll also be passing a budget for the urban renewal. And so it would probably be more advantageous to have the conversation before that.
So you need a motion then? Is that what you need?
We need a motion to, yeah, we need a motion to move it to.
Mr. Chair, I move that we set a date certain for the next Urban Renewal Meeting for May 17, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Hensley, second by Commissioner Davis to reschedule a date certain of the next URA meeting to May 17th, 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Last item on the agenda is to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
That passes. Six, one.
It doesn't really do anything, right? I'm overruled.
Good night, Canby. Thank you.
I'm an island of one nay.